Commissioner Keith Arnold, would you give our prayer tonight, please?
Well, we will thank you again to give us the opportunity to come together, discuss the business of our county. Yes, that you've got us and we might make the decisions that are in the best interest of citizens of the county. We ask the Lord to be with those who've been sick or infected and we want to thank you for sending the commissioners who've been sick in the hospital back with us today and they might be with us. We ask you to be with those who've been sick or infected, that you build their bodies, those in the community who feel or who lost loved ones, that you reach out and touch them and give them comfort that they need during this time. Be with the leaders of our state, nation, and forgive us our sins and keep America free and safe. All the same, we pray his name.
Amen. Mr. Sunny Hall, would you lead the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Eighteen present. I would also like to say that it's good to have our three commissioners back that's had a few health issues here. And we've all been trying to keep up with all y'all, all three of you. We've been communicating with each other to get updates on you and to see how that you're doing. And myself, and I know everybody else, we're really glad that you're moving on and recovering and that you're able to be here tonight. Next is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Mike Nundry and a second by Jimmy Kinnston. All in favor, say so by saying aye. Anyone oppose? There are none. Next is the citizens' forum. Zula Swearingen? Come on up, please.
Right here?
Yes, right there.
Okay. My voice is soft and you probably not able to hear me. But why I came tonight, I wanted to talk more about why we don't have a work release program for the Benton County jail inmates so that they can have the opportunity to pay off their court costs, their back fines, all of the things that's been piling up here that they keep getting a turning back into jail more often and then it accumulates more. But if you had a program that would let them learn and have a job and be saving money toward these fines and whatever costs it incurs to run the program, to get them to work. But it will be a, it will be something that will stop the reviving door process. They'll get out, they'll have a job, and they can go from there and have money in the bank. They can live a normal life, something maybe they haven't had a chance to. And while they're in there, they can actually be paying for their phone time, chirp time, commodities, so it wouldn't be putting it back on the family that is having to pay for them now. So, I don't know, it's just something I want y'all to consider. I know y'all would probably have to send a representative to the counties like Henry County or O'Byan that has a work program, maybe Dyer County where y'all can get an idea of what's going on and how to do it. But right now, it's so like you're being put in the hospital. And with their nurses and doctors, you're getting you well. And then you're getting right back in it or something, you don't have a job to go to. I'm just trying to treat people like I want to be treated. And I've worked as a nurse too long. I want to see the system work, not just put them back in jail. Do y'all have any questions?
Okay. So, Zula, the sheriff raised his hand.
Okay.
Swear, just thank you for coming up tonight. I enjoyed speaking with you today. We have got the paperwork, same on my desk. We have recently found a grant for a million dollars that we go to work through these programs. We're going to be applying for it. So, if we get a report where that grant is possible, the administration will report us on that. We're looking to get them that. It's a very good program. I've been to Dyer County three different times. And I've been paying the county to sell that straight off and on the early program. And they actually make money.
It makes money.
It will stop a lot of the citizens after leaving this program in. We've got right now, I've got about two hundred jobs in our surrounding areas. They want that program because I get a little bit of state funding if I'm in the world. But also, they say they're going to show up on time, they're going to break, they're going to leave back to work, and they're going to drug free and get there. And they also give them a contract that they're guaranteed jobs that they could have. We are looking into it. We've recently found that. We'll be applying for it.
Great. You've given me some hope then for our county. Okay, y'all work it out then. Thank you.
Thank you, Zula. Next is Dakota Green.
Hope everybody's doing all right tonight. Some of you may know me. If you don't, I'm Dakota Green. I own a candy cart, it's a card shop downtown. We give people of all ages something to do, come hang out, play video games, have a good time. So, I'm here with a few of my close friends, business partners. Adam Hendricks, Michael Weatherly, Blake Holman, and Jesse Rammer. My buddy Omar Morales couldn't be here tonight, but he's also going to be interested in this as well. So, what we're looking at is putting in an offer on the Lockhart building.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
The mayor says he would like to say something, I think, before you go any further.
Okay.
It's okay with you?
Sure.
If you don't mind, talk to some of the commissioners, maybe the county attorney, before you make your offer to the public?
Okay.
If you don't mind?
Yeah.
Just so they can address some legal issues before you make?
So, we can pass this around and just not necessarily announce?
That's fine, too. But just ask them if you should tell the dollar amount tonight before.
Okay.
I just wanted to do that for your benefit.
Thank you.
They're here tonight if you want to ask them about that before you disclose how much you want to offer. That's all I have to say.
I'll just kind of go through everything else then and we'll see where we end up on it.
That'll be great.
So, you know, this is, this is not a bid. This is an offer, something that we're looking to move forward on fairly quickly. As y'all know, I'm sure, there's a collapsed room and a big hole in the roof. And it's not getting better, especially during storm season. It's just going to get worse all the time. So, that's why we're trying to move quickly. That way, we can get in, get to work on it, and get it all done. You know, if this has to go through bidding processes and all this, then it's just going to push it out two, three months and it's just time loss that we can get those repairs done. So, our plans as of right now with it would be to make a marketplace and event center. We've got tons of ideas of stuff to go into it. Right now, the plan would be to use the back warehouse part of the building that is in pretty good shape. We'll just kind of board off the front and that'll be our overtime project, working on it. It's going to take a lot of work, you know, to get that going. But, you know, why us? We've got intentions of bringing people here and keeping people here, giving them something to do here versus, you know, going out of town or going to other places to do things. Outside of that, that's pretty much it. You know, we've got a number that we want to offer right now. And, you know, if it gets lengthened out, then that number is very potential, it's going to go down. That's all I got. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them for you. As far as the type of businesses? So, right now, I said we, there's a few of us going in on this and we've just been throwing around all kinds of ideas. We've got, you know, obviously, all that space in the back, there's so much opportunity for just all kinds of things. You know, we've got, you know, like party centers and big inflatables you can blow up, things like that. We threw around the idea of like, probably not paintball, but like, you know, airsoft or like a gel blast course, something like that. We kind of want to keep it open, like modular, I guess, so that we can do several things. Another big idea that we've got is we've got something that we're fixing to do at my card store called Curiosities Market. And it's just kind of a, a big market where people can come and sell things that, it's kind of like a flea market, but it's for unusual items, things that you wouldn't normally just see in like a flea market setting or any kind of other market setting. But they do that in Jackson and they get thousands of people coming to those things. And at the card shop, we're turning away vendors now. We've got too many vendors as it is. We've got a lot of people coming to sit up and we could just use that extra room, things like that. Eventually, down the road, you know, if we get the whole front end fixed, it could be, I could move the card shop into it, be a bigger shop there. So, we've just got tons of options.
Anyone else asking questions?
Question. So, you're not wanting the buildings back?
Yes, so, so we will be financing. So, one thing that we would like to do is not include the flood zone parts of the property. If you see the red outline there on the back page, that's, that's the part that we're wanting. So, we're cutting out some and then we're adding some of the parking lot next to it. So, that is our intention, is to get everything that's inside the red, roughly.
I think this is a great idea personally. I think it offers the children more things to do here in Benton County and all. But I'd like the county attorney to speak just a second before you go any further with the legal aspects of where we're at with that building and parking lot.
Mayor, Madam Chairman, do we have that out for bid?
Yes.
It is out for bid?
The two lots, both of them down there.
I don't think this is an appropriate time for an offer. I mean, you can make an offer anytime, but I think if we got it out for bids, you need to bid on something. Because if you get it now, anybody else that wanted to get it, they could come back and actually sue the county for its performance on the bid.
Yeah. Well, so, you know, I've been kind of working on this for the last couple of weeks and it's like, it'll be in the paper, it'll be in the paper, and it's not in the paper yet. So, you know, we're trying to move quick and that's kind of our deal is if this goes to a bidding process, we're looking at another three months before probably we can even get in it somehow.
I'm not sure how the county wants to handle it, how she's going to look at it. But if it's active, if the public, if it's been made known that there's going to be bids for it, I think we're stuck with the bids at least until the time to begin the bids. You don't have to pay them or at least if you have to pay them, you're not going to want them. And I see some problems potentially, and maybe nobody else wants the building. In that case, nobody would care. Until we know that, I advise y'all to seriously consider not backing up in the middle of the project.
I just know it's something that, you know, we've had for a while, it's been sitting and...
Hey, I'm on your side.
Yeah, I got you.
It would sound great, but I'm just talking from a legal standpoint. I'm not sure this is the time to just take it. I don't take an offer from somebody who's already taken, you know, put it out for bid.
I think it's great. I think it's a good offer, but I just, I don't want us to get into a lawsuit over it after we've already been told to put it out for bids and we have. We've already shown it to five people that's heard about that it's going to be sold, so that's just what concerns me.
Okay. I will just say, you know, like I said, that we think it's a good, fair offer.
It is.
And if it does go to a bidding process, it's likely to be significantly less, so. And that's, you know, it's nothing personal or anything like that. It's just that it's going to be a lengthier process and we're going to have more to consider as far as repairs and things like that, so. That's all I've got.
And he is able to make a bid if he wants to?
Of course.
Not an offer, just make up?
Of course.
You know when it's going to out of paper?
It's already gone out to the paper. It's already gone out to the paper for this week and already on public media.
And of course, those bids will come to the mayor's office and they'll go toward properties media.
So, it won't be months, it'll be weeks.
Well, yeah, but about the time that all that happens and then we have to go through the financing process and then, you know, it's just, it's just lengthier than we would like, but I understand. Is that all?
Hope you don't give up.
No, it's admirable. It's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number three on your agenda is the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner who wants to speak? Okay, no one raised their hand, we're moving on.
I'm on the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman, hello, everybody. I've been involved in some conversation, some comparisons to the Benton County Jail, department to the Henry County Sheriff in jail, comparisons to dollar amounts removed. Dollar amounts being similar if you remove certain items like eight resource officers that amount $400,000. And also some similar conversation in our county and Cal County, I don't know what you did with that. I do ask, I ask now that the ones that have been involved in this conversation in this talk, let not this talk cloud our decision making. I'm different in budget. I have come to my own personal decisions after many budget makers. Lots of listening, a lot of thinking. I think a substantial wage increase, both in bonuses and wages, and not just only for the jail workers and the sheriff department, but also the thirty-six salary employees and the seventeen part-time employees down here in Benton County. I don't want to be told we don't have the dollars because we do. I'm tired of hearing say, the sheriff won't allocate additional dollars either. Then let's put this language in a budget appropriations resolution so we can guarantee people across the board raise. Tennessee State Controller, audit is 2022 year. The budget audit shows our general fund, one million, three hundred, nineteen thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars over funding. That was the year we were afraid it was going to go under funding. That brings the county's undesigned fund balance, almost six million dollars. Compared to my first year as a commissioner, the general fund undersigned dollar amount was five hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars. An increase of five million, four hundred twenty thousand dollars in nine years. And I consider that a significant increase. Looking at graph three of the 2024 budget in Budget in War, it shows account one twenty-seven designated $170, $170,000 going to school resource officers. It is also found in the schools budget, account seven one one zero zero, it makes fifty-five, nine hundred and three ninety-nine. It shows $400,000, part of that to be designated to resource officers. So, if the school is going to pay for the resource officers and the schools are, yes, the state's going to pay for them, then that gives us $170,000 in account one twenty-seven that's appropriated for resource officers that can be spent somewhere else. Given the account one twenty-seven, a total of seven hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ten hundred spent dollars, and yes, these dollars can be used for bonuses. These dollars are the federal government, COVID dollars that was given us several million dollars and that's what's left to be spent. Looking at the TBA dollars, we were told last year we would be taking a cut in TBA dollars. It would be a thirty-eight, over $38,000. In 2023, the year ran down actual dollars showing three payments, one remaining to be paid, we're going to receive one million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. This is an increase from the prior year of 252,639 dollars. The 2024 budget estimate for graph three shows only one million, six hundred and eight thousand dollars. This estimate is 337,150 dollars less than what actual dollars show. The 2022 audit, this is good, I hope y'all get all of this, shows the general fund property tax being, the 2022 audit shows it, fund property tax being 129,429 dollars above budget estimate. They were using a 3.5% unliquated rate. Looking at the 2024 budget at work, Benton is using a 6% unliquency rate. This is people that don't pay their property taxes. Budget can change just 6% to 3.5% and fresh stuff. We have 113,696 additional dollars. As a form of twenty-eight, twenty-three, Benton County had seventeen part-time workers, thirty-seven salary employees, fifty-eight hours, that's sixty-eight hours at sheriff's office. Two investigators with Benton County, twenty-seven years and twenty-three years. One of them's making $21.51 an hour, the other one's making $20.85 an hour. The twenty-four jail guards, only seven have been with the jail over three years. This confirms to me they're having a large problem because of lack of place. Nine jailers earning less than $15.35 an hour. Six jailers earning less than $14.88 an hour. Part-time workers, EMA employees, eight and a half years, earn $9.87. We've got nine of the part-time workers making $10.80 or less. Seventeen working, part-time workers averaging $11.24 for lawyers. Nine dollars and eighty-seven cents an hour at the tire shop over twenty hours a week.
Commissioner Preston, your time is out.
You can either let me say it or you read back the next paragraph.
How much time do you need? One more page?
Yes, ma'am.
One minute, okay. No, sir. We've, we have done that in the past and I've looked through the manual and there is nothing that says that you can pass your minutes on to someone else.
Thank you, Chairman, continue. Thank you. A few days ago, a dozen eggs, $3.39. Six mega robs, $7.97. A pound of bloney, almost $6.50. Let's be advocacy minded, commissioners, and give the subject more consideration, more conversation. Let's send a message to our community, our businesses, potential new hires, for the folks considering a new home, business investment in our county. Let our county begin the conversation with changes and changes from other counties talking about business. I'm going to say, let's give $3,000 bonus to each 111 part-time worker. County workers are deciding part-time. That comes to $333. That's less than half of the $708,000 that can be spent on various different things. I just read the paper today, I don't know if I pulled my pillow today, but Governor County is giving all of their county workers a $10,000 bonus, $10,000 in cash. Furthermore, last paragraph, Chairman, thank you. Should there be no further action taken by this commission, I budget, the employers of Benton County deserve an honest explanation as to why. And it's not, and it's just not true to tell the county workers we don't have the money. Chairman, thank you for the additional media I wanted to offer.
Any other commissioner want to say anything? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Next is our county mayor, our attorney, or any invited guest or speaker. County attorney, would you like to say something?
You spend a couple of days with the county attorney's association meeting and there are several new rules that's going to affect, oh, you got nothing bad, a little bit, and I'll talk to you about that. We'll get some information about a couple of things that you're going to need to know about, probably by the next one. Not long.
Can I ask what the subject's about?
It is, it's a lot of it's to do with the open meeting law. It's not really changing, it's a tremendous amount, but there's wording that we have to get on the website for the county. There's just a few little lots and ends that we're going to have to do. It's actually starting the first of July, so we need to get, I think Charlie can take it. You guys need to know that there are a few little tweaks that they made. I hadn't heard a thing about it until we got there with this meeting. Kind of strange deal, people I've never heard of making these motions. But they're not going, it's not going to hurt, it's just going to be something that we...
Mayor Ward, do you have anything?
I don't.
Next is the approval of the minutes. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Price. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Next is the report of the public utilities. Need a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Number seven is the approval of releasing the trustee of Benton County the 2021 tax aggregate of eight million. What is that number? I've got all the dots on mine. What is the correct amount?
Eight million, three hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Eight million, three hundred fourteen thousand?
Four hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Okay. Does anyone, do y'all all have that on your agenda under number seven? Okay, that's what I see on my agenda.
Do you need an amendment to that amount?
I think we should, if it's, if it's put out that way, is it on?
That date is 2021.
Twenty twenty, and it should be 2022?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need amendments for that. Let's correct that before we move any further.
Hey, hold on just a second. I had read this. It is that number that they're releasing her from. This is just the total tax accounted for. So, I think that that's probably correct.
Beverly's here, yeah.
It is the twenty-one. It's the release of the twenty-one taxes. It is a release of eight million, one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred thirty-one. Eight million, one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred thirty-one.
Okay. Yes?
There's a item in the bag at them, that's what Miss Beverly gave me.
Okay, so that's correct. Project?
Is that one hundred eight million, one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred thirty-one?
So, that's got the four missing up there.
Let's replace it toward the top of that document.
Okay, let's have...
That has the four missing on the screen, but not on the document.
Okay. Should, you think we should?
It's on the document, it's just not on the screen.
But it's on the employer's?
Yeah.
Should we fix that?
Probably.
Okay. Because we've already approved the agenda as it is. I think we need to correct this. So, do I have a motion and a second to correct the figure that's on most everybody's agenda?
Yes, we've already done that.
Okay. Okay. So, if you're in favor of correcting this figure, please vote. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hittis?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion.
Yeah.
Motion passes, 18 yes.
Okay, now we will approve the document that came in your packet from the trustee's office. And the motion and a second for it was. Yes, this is, um, we amended the agenda, but we're not amending the document. So now we are approving the document. So. Are y'all ready for both? Okay, everyone vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number eight on your agenda is Resolution One. A resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to designate federal project funds received by the Benton County Board of Education as budget approved for separate projects within the respective funds. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Okay, if none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number nine is Resolution Number Two. A resolution by Benton County Director of School Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $259,321.99 received from the Tennessee Department of Education to the school budget for funding a summer learning camp. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? We have 17 yes and one is signed, very keen.
Are we ready? Okay. Number 10 on the agenda, which is Resolution Three, is a resolution by Benton County Director of School Mark Florence to move funds in the amount of $42,000 within the school's payroll budget in order to cover an expected shortfall. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Kennington. Any questions? If there are none, everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 11, which is Resolution Four. A resolution by Benton County Director of School Mark Florence to move funds in the amount of $10,000 within the school's budget in order to cover an expected shortfall in medical insurance. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? There are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 12 is Resolution Five. A resolution by Benton County Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $6,250 received as a gift from TBA to school's budget in order to purchase equipment. We have a resolution by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone have any questions?
The TBA, the TBA specify what they want to use for or not?
Well, I don't know that answer, but, um, Mr. Florence is in the audience. If you want to ask him that question. Mr. Florence, we have a question about what kind of equipment that, um, you're going to purchase from the TBA money?
For the TBA, the STEAM features inside that, so science, technology, engineering, mathematics, those features will decide what equipment they purchase from those grants.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, any others? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 13 is Resolution Six. A resolution by Benton County Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $64,715.6 received from a USDA grant to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any question about this one? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 14, which is Resolution Seven, is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds in the amount of $16,770 within the sheriff's payroll budget in order to cover an expected shortfall. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Price. Do we have any questions? Okay. If there are none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? We have 17 yes, one is signed, very keen.
Motion passes. Number 15 is Resolution Eight. Is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds in the amount of $21,500 within the sheriff's jail payroll budget in order to cover an expected shortfall. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Okay, if there are none, everyone vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 17 yes, one is signed, very keen.
Number 16 on the agenda, Resolution Nine. By Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds in the amount of $18,988 within the sheriff's budget in order to have the funds contained in the correct expenditure line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Arnold.
I think that was pulled in budget for law enforcement.
It's been pulled? Did the sheriff pull it?
You pulled that one, didn't you, Kenny?
Is that one of all the insurance?
Yes.
Is that, that money going to be moved back over?
That money's been appropriated in the 2024 budget, along with some more money to get a new car. It's already been appropriated in the new budget, so.
You can't vote on something when you don't have an account.
You can't transfer money from one account to another except at budget time, and that's why they put it into the new budget to help buy a new car. You can, you can't change from one fund to another by a resolution. It has to be done during bu- budget time. And that's why they did that, uh, it's my understanding.
I would say that during discussion, we decided to move that money so we could get, uh, or the car, the car.
Uh, what I wrote on mine is you pulled it during law enforcement. You pulled this resolution, uh, is, is that correct, Charlie?
I believe that's correct.
I have some discussion on that there later.
Yeah, but you'd already pulled it because you can't move from one fund to another.
Oh, chairman.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Vernon has been pulled. Number 17 is Resolution 10. Resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $358 received from refunds to the sheriff's medical claims expenditure line item. Motion by Stokes and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? If there are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? 17 yes, one is signed, very keen.
Number 18 is Resolution 11. A resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $2,305 received from various revenue sources to the sheriff's expenditure line items. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, if there are none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 17 yes, one is signed, very keen.
Number 19 is Resolution 12. Is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to make minor corrections to Resolution 2023-0417-06 concerning the Benton County Highway Department. Motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes.
Can I speak? That's just a typographical error on both accounts. It was put into 101, which is the general fund, and it was supposed to be 131 highway department. So y'all voted on the resolution already, but we just need to correct the, the entry. So you'll just be changing it from 101 to 131, which is the highway account.
Okay, any question? There are none, so please vote. Now we'll just correct. Okay. Yeah.
Anyone wish to change their vote? 18, motion carries.
Resolution 13, number 20 on your agenda, is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $4,500 received from the city of Camden to the library's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Okay. Mayor Ward would like to speak about this.
Okay, this, this is money that's come from the city of Camden to help fund the library. We always have to appropriate that every quarter. When we started this, it was one payment, but we received another one. So I would like to have someone to amend this to say $9,000 instead of 4,500. It's all money that the city of Camden donates and contributes to the library. We just have to pass it through to put it in the library's budget. But it's two quarters now, so we might as well take care of that if we could tonight. If somebody would amend this to say 9,000 instead of 4,500?
Okay, we have a motion to amend by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. So all in favor of the amendment, which is changing the 4,500 dollars to 9,000 dollars? All in favor? Please vote for the amendment. Okay.
Anyone wish to change their vote? 17, 18 yes, yes.
We need to vote on it, somebody.
Okay, now we're going to vote on it as it was amended to 9,000 dollars. All in favor, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 21 on the agenda is Resolution 14. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to move funds in the amount of $1,960.82 within the youth services budget to cover a projected shortfall due to change in personnel. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any discussion or questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? 18 yes.
Number 22 is Resolution 15. A resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to declare two county-owned computer monitors in possession of the Chancery Clerk as surplus property for the purpose of public sale or disposal. I have a res- a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? If there are none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 23 is Resolution 16. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $50,525.56 received from insurance recovery to the mayor's budget for building improvements. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Do we have any questions for the mayor? Okay, everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 24 is Resolution 17. Is a resolution by Benton County Road Supervisor Barry Porter to move funds in the amount of $650 within the highway department budget to set up a new line item for classes and conferences that had previously been paid from another line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Kennington. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 18 yes.
Number 25 is Resolution 18. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to seek the commission's approval to enter into a contract with the Benton County School Board and provide designated funding regarding the Camden Central High School sports field project. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Do we have any discussion or questions? Commissioner King?
No, Chairman, I have three documents, one being the resolution, one being a contract, one being procedures. I kinda don't understand. I know when I spoke on this back when we appropriated the money last year, uh, for this project, that there was going to be a memorandum of understanding that's signed by all parties. And I don't see that.
I would like to say one thing if that's okay. You have the three documents, because one's a resolution to follow up to actually spend the money that we passed a year ago. That's given me authority to cut that check loose to the, uh, schools. The other one's a contract between the county and the school system that is going to allow the soccer and the smaller football players and all to actually use the field. That's the reason we're giving some of the money for that. But the other one is the procedures, which I think it's a memorandum of understanding with you guys. And the people with the soccer and the, well, I, I could let Mr. Kenningston, uh, speak to that if he don't mind. And, and Mr. Florence too, to, to talk about what.
We had a meeting with the county, talking to, uh, Mark Florence and also soccer and, uh, Mark Florence and myself. We all came up with the policies.
Okay, the contract says in item two, the Benton County Board of Education will develop and approve policies and procedures which allow for the use of artificial turf built for non-school-related functions as deemed appropriate by the adopted policies and procedures. In good faith, the Benton County Board of Education will work with the Benton County Commission and representatives for minor league football and soccer to develop procedures for these leagues. This, that we call the memorandum of understanding is not signed by anybody. Therefore, I move that we, uh, postpone this matter until next commission meeting. I was thinking.
So I have a motion by Commissioner King, and it was seconded by Commissioner Price to postpone.
Discussion. I think we need more than just to postpone. We need to know what, what you want from this exactly. Uh, Mr. Florence might can shed some light on that, I don't know.
What we need, all right, number two in the contract, if this is the policy of procedure, it needs to be signed by somebody. That should be all parties involved. That was the gist of me bringing that up when we appropriated money.
I, I understand what you're saying. All parties involved are the ones that drew this up. And, uh, on passage tonight, it goes in with the contract, with, with all of it. But if you want everybody to sign it, they're, they're the ones that come up with that and forwarded it to my office.
Well, let's ask the county attorney, is this valid, being it not signed?
I think it is, but if you want it signed.
Okay.
All we got to do is get it signed.
If you say it's okay.
If you want to wait till next month, I'll get the, we'll get it signed by King and probably the mayor, being your representative. When this started, there was some different language in that. You know, that, that part wasn't there, and that's why everybody called me to try to fix it. I mean, we did, I think, but we couldn't. And the procedures, they're going to be changed by, by anyway. But if you think we need to sign it, it's not going to hurt a thing waiting a month unless the mayor says that something has got to be done. I mean, we can get a signature line item, get it fixed.
My goal here is nothing more than to make sure we take care of the kids. That's the whole goal of this.
Uh, this resolution was sponsored by me, so I'll pull it until next month and we'll get, uh, if you want to specify to the county attorney who all needs to sign it, so we make sure we have it done properly. We'll make that happen before next month's meeting.
Thank you.
Y'all ready? Y'all ready to move on? Okay, number twenty-six on your agenda is Resolution Nineteen. Resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars to the mayor's budget to cover an expected shortfall in payroll line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, there are none, so please vote. You want to change your vote?
Motion carries, eighteen, yes.
Number twenty-seven is Resolution Twenty. Is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of two thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance to the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Mr. Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Do we have any questions for the sheriff? Okay, there are none, so please vote. You want to change your vote?
Seventeen, yes, wanted to sign, very keen.
Resolution passes. Number twenty-eight on your agenda is Resolution Twenty-One. It's a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars to the sheriff's budget in order to cover an expected shortfall. A motion by Commissioner Hall, and we have a second by Commissioner Stokes.
Do we need to read it before it was amended?
If it's been amended.
It was amended in.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, this resolution was amended in committees. So if you need the number, um, Mayor Ward's going to call off each one of these that were amended.
Resolution number twenty-one was amended in, uh, law enforcement. The decrease revenues in unassigned fund balance is forty-three thousand nine fifty-three sixteen. They didn't change, uh, item number three twelve, contracts with private agencies. They zeroed out custodial supplies. They didn't change drugs and medical supplies, number four thirteen. Number four twenty-two, food supplies, they amended that down to eighteen thousand. Four ninety-nine, other supplies and materials, they left the same. Medical claims, number five oh-seven, they amended it down from sixty thousand to twenty thousand. And five ninety-nine, other charges, they made that zero. So that comes out to forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents of, of increased expenditures.
Does anyone have any questions?
Now, was that an email I brought?
Sir.
Was that an email? I was sending out an email or what? I mean, the original, the other copy.
I don't know. But, uh, Budget Committee amended it, passed it with the amendment, and, I mean, uh, law enforcement did the amendment, and then Budget passed it off still that way.
Okay, is everyone clear and ready to vote? Okay, please vote. No. We're not amending it. It was already amended in committee. This is not amended. Because it was amended.
No one brought up an amendment on this, it was done in law enforcement.
It was already done before tonight. It was amended.
So they're voting on it as it was amended in Budget and Law Enfor- in, in Law Enforcement, actually.
Okay. Okay.
So now we're voting on twenty-one.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now everyone needs to vote on Resolution Twenty-One. Anyone wish to change their vote?
Seventeen, yes, wanted to sign, very keen.
Okay, number twenty-nine is Resolution Twenty-two. It's a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the sheriff's budget. Okay, this resolution was also amended in committee. Is that right? From forty thousand down to thirty thousand dollars. Everybody make a correction on your resolution?
It was passed in law enforcement, yeah, Budget was amended.
And it was passed in law enforcement?
We're not doing that.
No, no. They were already amended and passed by both committees. So we're voting on Resolution Twenty-two, and the correct amount is thirty thousand dollars. Stephen?
I thought you had to make it before we.
It, it was amended in committees.
Right.
Before we got here. I know we didn't used to do that, but we've got information that we can do it. Okay, so is everyone clear? We're voting on Resolution Twenty-two, and the decrease and the increase amount is thirty thousand dollars. All in favor, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Seventeen, yes, wanted to sign, very keen, motion carries.
Resolution Twenty-three is number thirty on your agenda. It's a resolution by Benton County Insurance Committee to move county employees' health insurance coverage to United Healthcare as recommended by Benton County's Benefit Counselors, which is Benefit Inc.'s, for the fiscal year twenty-two-three twenty-four. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Kenningston. Do we have any questions about this? Okay, if none, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries, eighteen, yes.
Next is the appointing of notaries. After we do the notaries. Because that, that is part of the agenda. I need a motion and a second for approving notaries. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Mr. Melton. Our three notaries are Shelby Downing, Troy Gregsdale, Anita Weaver. Okay, all in favor of the notaries? Please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion carries, eighteen, yes.
Okay, next is any other business. Commissioner Stokes.
Madam Chairman, I remember that we, uh, suspended rules to consider Resolutions Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stokes, we need a second. We have one by Commissioner Hall. So everyone in favor of us, um, taking business on Resolution Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six? Please vote how you want to do that. Yeah, we have, we have one added. That's okay.
Yeah, I may need to see her.
You want to change your vote?
Motion carries, suspend the rule.
Okay, motion passed to suspend the rule, so we're going to bring up Resolution Twenty-four. So we need a motion and a second to bring it to the floor. A motion by Commissioner Kenningston and by Commissioner Melton. This is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to approve the mayor to enter into an updated contract for the sale of the Old Walmart Building.
Is it a motion and a second?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say that Aaron Ray, a gentleman that we entered into the contract with about four or five months ago, is needing a little extra time. He's wanting to sign a contract with a real estate company that deals with only commercial leases. When you start dealing with six million dollars to remodel a building and getting loans, the bank wants you to have contracts signed to show how much you're going to be bringing in on your leases. Well, he's got two customers that are signed up, NAPA and Ace Hardware. And he needs one more, and he's having some trouble, so he's going to bring in these guys from Nashville. He has to give them six percent of the entire lease to get them to, to do this for him, but he's willing to do that just to make the deal work. And I think with what he's got invested in this, uh, project, as many times as I've had to meet him out there with his contractors and architects and engineers, I think it'd only be fair to extend this one time. Just like I told you guys, if something happens that he's not able to close on this deal in six months, I won't ever ask you again, we'll just go with a, a different avenue. But I would appreciate y'all, I think it's only right to give him a little extended time on this, uh, to try to make it happen. He's put a lot of effort, a lot of money into it. So I, I would ask y'all to vote for that this one time, I won't ask you again. Hopefully it works out. I really honestly think in talking to this company, I met with them too, the, the real estate company that's going to be doing the, uh, the lease agreements, and they're really pumped up about it and said that it won't take them no time to get a couple of leases signed for the rest of the square footage. So I think it'll be a go after this, but I just respectfully ask y'all to give him a chance. I mean, if we didn't do it, we'll have an empty building sitting there, looking for somebody like Aaron Ray to come forward and help us out, so we've already got him. Let's just, uh, give him a little bit more time and see if we can get this moving forward.
It is, we've, I'm discussing that, uh, about putting some money down, but he's, he's thinking his own money and doing right now. Trying to give everything he's paid, everything that.
He does, and, and with this contract rolling over, the ten thousand that he's give, uh, the lawyer's office that's holding earnest money still is there, and it'll be exactly the same. If something happens that he backs out, we'll, he'll only get to keep that.
Commissioner Arnold?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion. I've talked to Mayor Ward with his convenience, and that's fine. Uh, I read over the contract, of course, the gentleman has done his due diligence, which anybody would do. Get their own property, buy their own land, do their due diligence, have it inspected. And that always comes out of the lawyer's pocket. This contract, the way I read it, is that, you know, he does have ten thousand dollar earnest money in the deposit that he earns off of it. But there's more loopholes in there that he can get out of that increase as long as.
Hey, what's the loopholes? Let, let's hear the loopholes, because I, I didn't see any loophole.
But I'd like to make a motion that we'll give him the extension, but he'll, his earnest money will become hard earned. But I'd like to make a motion that we'll give him the extension, but his earnest money will become hard earnest money, and that if he does not close, that earnest money will be forfeited against him. So, you know, it just makes his earnest money hard money, that we grant him this extension, if he does not close in six months, he'll forfeit his ten thousand dollars. That's my amendment to the motion.
They can do anything they want to, it's just hurting us.
Have we got anybody knocking down the door?
No.
Someone else here is going to buy this place, it's like he's going to walk our building, ransicking a lot of his own money in there. And I mean, if we had three people waiting in line, I would see that being something we would do. But I just want to tell you now, I said, no, I'm.
Anybody who sells their property, I won't tie your property for a year, that you let me tie it up without giving.
Do we have any realty or anything now?
What?
Do we have any realty, trying to sell it?
He's got a contract, so we've got a contract. All I'm saying is, we give him another six months extension, his earnest money will become hard earnest money. If he fails to close in six months, he'll forfeit. He's got, you know, he's got this company that, you know, says they can get these people to come in there, that's great, I love to see. But if he's got confidence in him, he wouldn't have a problem signing a contract, extension, making his earnest money hard earnest money.
Well, this is his own money, can we do something instead of his earnest money being under his loophole?
I mean, that's just my motion, I mean, if you have, but.
I would just like to know what the, I'd just like to know what the loopholes, you're a real estate man, what are the loopholes you're talking about?
Except with finance, he won't call me, he can't even do it, so I can't get the loan. He can come back when he inspections, so I don't have to pay him for those inspections. He's got his inspection period where he'd come back fast and fast. I don't have a contract in front of me, several times I've read it, but I've read a bunch of contracts. I wouldn't sign a contract and tie up his property for a year without some hard earnest money. That's just my opinion, because like I said, it don't mean a whole lot to a lot of people, but it's my opinion and that's my motion, that we would, if he's that serious, we'll put up his, our, our garden, we do that all the time. But I don't think that I can come to either one of y'all and say, you know, let me list your house, I have a contract with your house and property, give me a year and do something with it, and I won't call, give my earnest money back if you're still happy with it.
Okay, Commissioner Bain, do your recognition.
I just want to say that I know that Commissioner Arnold wants the county to keep that building, but with the, the amount of money that it would take to repair that building, taxpayers during this time, when the times are as hard as they are, cannot afford the burden to repair that building. And I would love myself to see a good retail store, like Ace Hardware, whatever, go in that building and bring jobs to this county and bring retail business to this county. And I know that times are hard, and I'm sure that he needs this time to arrange for people to buy it. I mean, it's the kind of thing that's not going to happen overnight. And I really feel like we need to give him an honest chance to try to get the businesses going in there and get that building sold.
Mr. Fowler?
Could we, I feel there is a loophole there, and if he does that business out of there or whatever, is there something we could have him sign, so look, you know, we've got six months on it, we're going to go get him to put it out there for other people to buy if you don't produce in six months, or something like that?
It's going to, I'm sorry, let me speak. I just giving you that back. I won't bring it back to you again. After the six months of this extension, if he don't produce, it'll be the counties to do whatever y'all decide to do with it.
That's unlikely.
That's the way it was when I come in office, it was just sitting there. We don't have the money to fix it up, like Ms. Bain said. We can't spend six million dollars on it and turn it into county offices to continue to just provide the same services we're providing. So I think this is a wonderful agreement with Mr. Ray to make this happen. I think we just need the help. You know, when you're dealing with a house, you can deal with the bank and get a loan or whatever to buy a house. When you're dealing with commercial real estate, these companies that we're talking about trying to get to sign up a contract to move one of their businesses here, they're like us. They set a budget every year. If it's not in the budget during that year, you're going to have to wait. They're not going to have a variance on that, so I think we've moved into that area. He's already talked to a lot of these companies, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. But I think it took a little more time because of budgets and the way companies run to make this happen. I just think we owe it to him to give him six more months, and it's really for us. If we can make him succeed, we're going to succeed, so.
I respect he knows he's a builder person. He's actually the broker that sold us the buildings. You know, that's good, and I just, I see it as something that would bring more and more people here and get more options. It seems like he's trying hard. I hope he won't screw with something, if there's loopholes on it, but I mean.
Commissioner Stokes, you're right, Commissioner Stokes is recognized, I'm sorry.
So how much time is left on the current agreement?
I apologize for not knowing that. It's been over four months, but less than five months.
It's a six-month agreement?
Yep.
In three weeks, property could be again. Could we invite him to come there and let him know what, what questions we have that we need answered? And could you just consider pulling this resolution yourself?
I'd rather y'all go ahead and vote on it with what Keith's.
Is this an extension of the contract?
Yeah.
It's not a new contract, it's simply an extension.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is time is of essence, and I'd rather you go ahead and vote on it tonight. Whether you vote for it or not, it's just for the betterment of Benton County, and it's, he's working hard to make this happen. But what's going to happen is, we bought that with ARCA money, and if we keep stretching it out, then we're going to end up in trouble on that, so give him, give him a few more months, let him make it happen. That's all I'm asking.
I.
I know what you're saying.
But I just thought that perhaps if you were considering, you know, he had ten months to it, that perhaps since he's the other party.
Well, he's sitting here with this guy chomping at the bits, ready to go, and I didn't put it out last month, you know, I had it made up, and I didn't put it out because we only had twelve members here. And, you know, I didn't feel like it was fair to him to put it under a vote that has to have, you know, that many votes with only a few people here, because I knew Mr. Arnold didn't want us to sell it. I know he wants us to put five or six million dollars into it and make it offices. It's his opinion. I know he has a drandy on that, and that's fine, he can have his opinion. But it shouldn't move, it shouldn't mess us up moving forward with progress for Benton County, honestly.
I don't try to mess up the contract, I'd love to see Ace Hardware, community business, that can come in. I'm just saying that it's a good business for the county. Somebody wants to have an extension on a contract of this size, you take it out six more months, if they were to leave, make their earnest money harder.
Don't you have a motion and a second?
You don't want to do it by, that's up to y'all, but I just think.
It's for your decision.
Real estate, so millions of dollars of commercial property, that happens all the time, but, you know, that's just my motion, I call the question.
Commissioner Price was in line to speak, Mr. Arnold.
Madam Chair, I've got one question, question and comment. Mr. Ray, is he, is he a Napa man?
Mm-hmm.
So is this his store that's going to go in this building?
One of them.
One of them, yeah. And so we've got one right now, and we've got a potential, okay.
That's exactly right. He owns like seven or eight Nappas. And he don't mind, he don't mind owning those stores and running them, because he's got people in his network. But he's got to be able to lease the rest of that square footage out to make money to pay for the remodel.
So in the resolution, it says Benton County Mayor Mark Ward approved the mayor to enter into an updated contract. It doesn't say a contract extension. So why do we need to update it? Well, the condition is a chance to look at that contract before taking a vote on it.
We amend the word update.
Y'all can do anything you want to do. I don't understand what the big deal is, but when I.
With the word update, what you said when I asked if it's the same contract, there's an extension of it, right? The word update may be pulling things off.
And it may need to be amended to say extend, if you'd like to do that, Mr. Price? Maybe it's the wrong wording, but it's going to update it for another six months.
Okay, well, hey, don't we have to?
You get a motion and a second.
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor right now, which was Keith's amendment. Okay, you need to speak that to them so that they know how to write the amendment.
The county entered into an extension of the contract for six months. Deal from the buyer agrees to make his ten thousand dollars earnest money non-refundable if he fails to close after the six months extension.
Okay, does everyone understand what you're voting for? Okay, so if you're for Keith's amendment, vote.
Read it, read it again.
To enter an extended contract, additional six months extension on the contract subject to the buyer making his ten thousand dollars non-refundable if he fails to close after the six months extension.
Other words, instead of just amending your words like you said, if you extend the contract, this amendment is also on eight, where he thinks he's got some loopholes to get, jump through that he can get out of giving his ten thousand. It's already put up. He wants to make it solid, because he thinks there's some loopholes somewhere in the contract that he's seen, which makes it out.
Okay, does everyone understand, before you vote, what you're voting for? Okay, everyone vote.
He's not pressing to put no more trust in us in doing this right here, because we're digging for loopholes or something in there.
Okay.
I'd say this one.
Okay. We need to vote, we need to vote, okay. Everybody needs to vote right now, no more discussion. Anyone wish to change their vote? Four yes, fourteen no. Motion carries. Okay, now we're back to if whoever wanted to make the amendment to change the word update to extend. Was that you, Commissioner Price? Okay, his motion is to change the word updated contract to extended contract. I need a second for that.
Yeah, I said.
Can you just take it up to the screen?
Okay, that's all right, okay, we do have a second.
There's more than one place in there where it says updated.
Well, okay, each place that it says updated will be extended.
Is that right? Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yes, the second amendment. Okay, they're saying that they, they're saying that Mr. Price, and I think Mr. Melton made this amendment to change the word to extended.
From the motion. From what?
From updated to extended, yeah. Isn't that right? You and Mr. Price?
Mr. Price and Mr. King here.
Okay, Mr. Price and Mr. King. We got it now? Okay, now we're ready to vote on the amendment, which is changes the word updated to extended. If you're for that, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Now we are back to, now, that's okay. Now we are back to the resolution as it was just amended. This is what you're voting for now, so all in favor? Please vote. Well, and just amend it.
Okay, as amended.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone wish to change their vote? Seventeen yes, one no, motion carries. Moving along to resolution twenty-five. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to move funds in the amount of thirty-eight hundred dollars within the mayor's payroll budget for the creation and funding of a new position within the mayor's office for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Anyone want to ask the mayor any questions about this? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote. Okay, I'm sorry.
Now, what, I came in and asked about this a little bit, and I don't know if everybody knows that, but you're thinking someone to retire.
Well, you know, our payroll clerk is, I won't say her age, but she's getting on up there, and Jean's got forty-two years in. They're the only people in that office that know payroll and bills. So Budget Committee talked about it during budget and offer the next year is to put somebody in there to learn those jobs. For when something happens to one of them, we'll have somebody trained, because we'd be in a big mess right now if something happened, and it could happen any day, so. This is just money that was left over from some positions that I got rid of during the year. And I was asking for thirty-eight hundred of it to go ahead and hire the person now, not even start training, because it's going to be in the budget for next year anyway.
Yeah, who's all, who owes payroll bills through that office? I'm sure there's some office open there, there's a lot of work you sit.
Oh, they don't stop, I'm telling you, they, both of them are valuable assets and very busy all day, every day.
But everybody in there is doing their job.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Seventeen yes, one no, thirteen no. Resolution twenty-six is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to move funds in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars within the library's budget. I have a motion and a second, motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Anyone?
Madam Chair, give us one, that one was just into us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We can discuss it if y'all want to. I absolutely don't like putting things in other business, and I expressed my concern to the library. This is a grant that we get from the library that we got July first last year, I believe, and it's never been appropriated to put in an expenditure line item. The county has to match that grant, it's a fifty percent grant for the library. So I think it's, I had to give him my copy, I'm sorry, I went off memory, but I think it was twenty-two thousand three hundred, twenty-two thousand five hundred grant, so we were going to have to come up with eleven thousand semi dollars from the county. Susan has dug around in her budget and found money to transfer, as you see, from three different line items, to come up with the full amount. So if y'all pass that tonight, it'll transfer to the line item where it needs to be expended from. But this, the county will get eleven thousand seven hundred back after that money's spent. And it will not go back to the library. She said she won't say a word about it, it'll just go back in the general fund, so it's a win-win for all of us. I hate that we're doing it tonight, and the last day for a purchase order was today, because we're going to have to do some finagling tomorrow to make it work, but if y'all will transfer that, we can make it work. And the county will get eleven thousand seven hundred dollars from the state.
Anyone having questions for the mayor?
This is not new money or anything, this is transferring within her budget.
Kinda, no other discussion, so everyone please vote. Okay. There are no other discussions. So everyone please vote.
Okay. On data processing or on the decrease, uh, 101, 565, 500 dash 709, 2,500, you got a decrease there and then you got an increase, the same thing.
The 101, 56500 dash 709 data processing, where you're doing a decrease from is in her actual line items in her budget for data processing equipment.
Yeah.
The 101, 56900 dot 709 is in data processing equipment in a different expenditure account where her grants normally go. If, if you look at the 56900, it's different than the 56500. It's two different line items in there.
I think that it would just confuse, you know, on the explanation or data process.
That every.
Her money to do the match.
Yeah, she's using her money for the match, but what it is, is the 56500 are all of her expenditures, uh, with different line items. The 56900, 709 has only one thing in that line item and it's what her grants normally go into where she can spend them. So she's just transferring that to that 900 line item where, where it can all be spent for that one grant. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It is confusing. I've dealt with this all day to try to get it right.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? All right. Everyone vote, vote please. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion, Harry. Right. King, yes.
We're still under any other business? Do we have any other business, Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll make a brief. I have a, a document that I want to share with everybody. A 74th, it's long. I'm seeing for the first time in the last couple of weeks. It come about, Washington Blackwell was in for Benton County earlier in the year. And, uh, the question was put to her and it's concerning the TBA, which makes a federal level. And her office responded. It's about the Levins Industrial Site, very, kind of city. And it's 61 acre landfill started sometime around 2007. And Jeff Parish from Washington Blackwell's office took an address he got with EDA, Pennsylvania Department of Environment Conservation. They got this information. I have a copy of it. The mayor had the copy of it. And I'm really not smart enough to read this sentence and understand it all. It's from an analytical report. That landfill is 61 acres big, large. EPA started dredging their ash pond. That's what comes into the pond there. The land is all that's smoking there. They dredge and they haul it by truck. Benton County is in that world for seven years. There's been five wells created on this landfill so that the water tables can be monitored and supervised. EDA, last year, they take samples of this water and some of those struck at the testing water for like 18 hours. Arsenal, Barry, and Born, Romeo, Cobalt, copper lead, mercury, nickel, silver, zinc, iron, something. All right. Now they're four or five out. And this Francis here, they have said his every test that he's ever been taking. They're going all the way back to 2009. I've got this stuff and I'm not spoiling nothing for anyone. I'm gonna ask the mayor if he will let you encourage or county attorney to look at it. It's just kinda, can't miss your survey.
Rocky, are you telling me that some of those are out of range when, when they do their tests?
I'm looking at, I'm looking, all wells have a number. They go by number, one, two, three, four, five. And I'm looking at well number four and I'm looking at, at two, from 10, 10 and 13, year two, that and 13 until eight, 18. And I'm looking under Cobalt and it's shaded, it's shaded in gray. And that tells me shaded sales indicate an excess of regulatory action limit. This stuff's all over the place. But I'm not smart enough to sit up here and tell you all that. I'm just gonna tell you that I got this. If anybody's going to really want to talk about it, you can get it from me, you can get it from the mayor. I never knew this stuff existed in Washington Blackwell. And it happened. This is our office. Now we know at least the sites been evaluated twice a year. What brought all this up to me was I lived at EPA back in 2014 on TBA. They voted their sites very closely for the regular. The sites where they had that ash pond, where they had the ash mounds. And they mentioned Johnsonville, Kennesaw City, and Harold, and all these steam plants, but they didn't mention EPA mountain on that ash, I think. I don't know. With that being said, I'm gonna give it to them and talk about it.
We'll, we'll follow up on that, Rocky. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rocky. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone about our special called meeting on May the 30th. The public hearing will be before the meeting. Public hearing will be at 5 o'clock and our meeting will be at 6 o'clock to vote on the fiscal year budget. May 30th. Anything else?
Madam Chairman, next month we fall on Tuesday. That is a holiday.
It is? So we'll meet on the next night, Tuesday night? That's the way it reads. If it falls on the holiday, we meet the next night. Okay. I'm, but I'm glad you brought that up, cause I hadn't noticed that. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Jennings to adjourn.
You're like this.
All, all in favor of adjourning? Say ah. That's okay.